All right, we're now at...
I'm sure it'll be most difficult when you ask.
That's all making it up.
So, we're a little behind time schedule. I'll tell you how we're going to make up time. You remember our goal by the time we're done with our sessions is to... Those bunt cakes are a distraction, ma'am.
We're fine, sorry.
Anyway. Anyway. Yeah, but people can get them whenever they want them. So, our end... Okay, the end... I'm not on the book yet, we'll get it. So, at the end of this time, remember, we are looking at above the line renovating our strategic plan. And so, lots of conversation and brainstorming will go into that process by the time Jessica gets us to that point. So, today, we're just going to take care of a couple of things very swiftly. One is to give you some backup information that was asked about at the end of our last session, some academic comparison information, as well as our suspension information. I think that's critical for you to have, to see our gaps and to see how we compare. We will not have time to go through that. We'll give you your handout. Dr. Vasquez will orient you to it, but we have to get on to our non-instructional portion of the strategic plan, or we won't keep pace with what we're supposed to do. So, you'll have that information. You can review, you can ask questions about it later, but we don't have time to go through it extensively. You'll see the gaps. It's very simple to go through and read. When we get to the non-instructional portion of our strategic plan, I'm going to ask staff to be rather swift in their review. If you'll make notes where you have questions for clarity purposes, then we'll certainly answer those questions at the end. But I want to make sure we have time for our consultant to start us moving toward that SWOT analysis. And I know that they've shared some of the information with you ahead of time as well. So, hopefully, that will be agreeable. Everybody good with going a little bit faster through those two sections?
Yes.
Very good. Ready to go.
All right, great. Good evening, everybody. I know this is the second half, so y'all are already warmed up, literally, after walking in here, so we should be good to go. For today specifically, the two things that I want to try to get through, one is completing that discovery piece, right? Doing the situational analysis and trying to figure out where we want to focus on from a strength, weaknesses, opportunity, and threat perspective, and be able to use that as an input into a discussion around the impact on the actual strategic map that we're looking at. So, what is... What... We're not going to go through, obviously, and make the changes tonight. We don't have that kind of time. But what we do want to do is just get a feel for where we might be standing with that strategic map. What's the extent of the changes that we think we may or may not be making to that map? So, at the end of today, we want to have a pretty good idea of what that looks like. So, it's a lot to cover, so I'm just going to dive right in and go through here real quick. So, in order to do that, we do have our agenda today. Start off real quick, walking through, just a reminder real quick of the approach and for some of the folks that weren't here last time. And we'll talk a little bit, just do a... Tie a bow around the "start with Y" conversation that we started with last time. Pull together all of your input and have some interesting feedback on that. So, just to ground us and create that ultimate direction of where we are headed for, so that we're making sure that all of our work is aligning with that. Then we will move on to the instructional comparison data update that Maria's going to walk us through, and then we'll have the non-instructional update from the team. And then, after we've completed that, we will take all of that information and do an exercise around doing a SWOT, creating the situational analysis work. And that's going to be very interactive, so I'm glad that we're getting a little cool air in here, because we'll be up and moving around and doing some stuff to try to make that go as quickly as possible. And then, we'll take all of that information, once we've created some themes, and we will do the actual impact on the OCPS strategy map and see where that stands, and then we'll wrap up and do some next steps. So, it is a lot to cover, so... But that's our agenda to get us to that objective for today. Just some reminders, some helpful tools that we have for us. I'm not going to go through all of them, but you all remember the helpful tools that we had, the ground rules that we had from last time, just to focus one conversation at a time, the 100-mile rule. You'll note that I did not have on the agenda a break to use the restroom, just self-break. I know you wouldn't be able to travel 100 miles to go to a restroom, but I know you would want to. So, please, just self-break as you need to. And then, if you have electronics, do what goes on silent, that'd be great. I do have the ground rules posted over here if you need a reminder, if we need to refer to them at all. And then, the other tools that I have around parking lot, key decisions and action items, actually, they're lined up here at any time that we find ourselves either going too deep into a rabbit hole on something and we want to just make sure that we grab it for discussion later, we'll put that on the parking lot. If there's any action items, obviously, that's pretty clear where that goes. And if there's any ultimately key decisions that we make, we'll make sure that we include those. And we'll refer back to those at the end of our discussion today. The other tools that aren't listed on here, you have in front of you in the blue folder is a copy of the presentation that I'll be going through, so we'll be referencing that. It'll be helpful later as we go through the SWOT to be able to look back at some of the items. And then, the red folder, the burgundy folder, is the non-instructional update, so you'll have that for your information as we go through that as well. Okay? Just a reminder, just to ground us again on the approach that we're taking, we are using a process of going through and scanning the environment, filtering down to what's most important for us, and defining what that plan is going to look like. The next ones around planning and acting on that are not areas that we're going to be getting into as a board. That's, you know, we... Once we define what our strategic objectives are, at that point, that's when we are going to hand it over to Dr. Jenkins' cabinet, and they will perform the rest of that planning and action planning on that as well. The components of the map, as a reminder, as well. At the top are our organizational drivers. That's your vision, mission, and values. And those are typically not very changeable, but of course, an item that we're going to discuss as we go through here. The second level is your market differentiators, what makes you unique and special in the market. And then, the third level under that is the objectives, the strategic objectives that you want to focus on in order to be able to achieve your vision, your mission, and values as well. Those are the areas that, again, we're focusing on as part of this work. Aligning with that is the performance measures, as well as the initiatives that actually get you to those objectives. And that's what you're going to hear recorded out on today, from the standpoint of the non-instructional group that's going to be providing that feedback today. You okay?
I choked.
Oh, goodness. Okay. Make sure.
She stopped making noise, I'll run over and we'll do that.
No, I won't get off this. Okay. Good.
I think we got this.
Okay. So, and you have a copy of the map in your binder and from, hopefully, that leftover from last time. So, we're in that planning and discovery phase. At the end of today, we want to know, have a good idea of how much we would be moving into actually doing the strategy sessions, if we're going to make significant updates, so we hope we should be on that blue arrow by the time we finish up today. And then, determine on how much we need to do around the strategy sessions, and then, if there's a large difference there, how much we would need to do around communications and feedback. So, that's the process where we are today. I'm trying to fly through, and I know some of this is just review, but I want to make sure that it's still on the main page. And as far as the process, right now, this is the second discovery session, and timing-wise, we haven't actually picked out dates for going forward, because we're trying to figure out how much we're going to need going forward here, so we'll be sure that we look back at that as well. And I'm going to go ahead and skip the timeline because of that. So, that was my 15-minute kind of five, and trying to make up some time. So, last time, we started with the "start with Y." You remember the Simon Sinek video, talking about why and the purpose, and why that is so important to have that idea of what that looks like? And as a team, we worked through some ideas, and we documented why it was important to you as a board member, but then also, we went back and after we watched the video, we talked a little bit about the importance of OCPS. Why is Orange County Public Schools important, and why is it important that we're looking at this work? And these were the sort of questions that we were looking at, you know, what's the compelling reason behind OCPS? It really becomes the focal point from a direction standpoint on everything that we are doing, and it's important from that standpoint. So, what did we hear from everybody? This was the "why" in your words. I'm not sure, Dr... Did we send out notes from the last session? Do we know?
I think so.
I don't know if you guys have seen all these. Okay, so, then I will take a second just to walk through these. So, the "why" in your words, there's a lot of information around championing, making sure that we give kids a place to thrive. We talked about potential, we talked about promise. And I think this was really helpful. And I know as a team, we don't want to go through the effort of wordsmithing a single sentence. We just want to directionally know that we're all aligned on what we're looking at. So, what I did was I took all of these statements, these, again, were in your words, making me a possible, possible, equity, et cetera, and I created a word cloud. You guys are familiar with this. But a word cloud is created by taking those words that appear more often and making those larger in the picture. So, the things that we heard over and over was about children, community, teachers, success, prosperity. Those ones are the ones that kind of jump out. And so, I think this would be a useful thing to keep in front of you and keep in your mind as we're going through the rest of these efforts, because that kind of just tell you, you know, why are we doing this? Why is it important? And helps us think about our vision and mission values in that context. And I think that would really help you to make some decisions as we go through this as well. Any questions or comments on anything that you see here? Any surprises? All right. Okay. Like I said, there's a copy of this. It's pretty small, but we can get you a bigger copy of it, but if you want to refer to this as we're going through, then I think that would be helpful as well. Okay, so, as far as background, that was really all I planned to talk about prior to getting into some of the updates from the team. So, I just wanted to remind you, last time, when we were doing the instructional updates, we used the SWOT tool, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, to capture your notes and your thoughts as you listen to the different folks who are going to be presenting today. I would suggest that you probably want to do that again, because this will be a helpful tool for you as we get into the next section of what we're going to be doing today as a group. I think that would be helpful. And you may... I don't know if we have, you know, probably just grab an extra piece of paper or whatever that looks like, and hopefully, you were able to bring what you used last time as well, to be able to reference that as well. So, at this point, we're going to switch it over. We're going to turn control of the discussion to Maria Vasquez, who is going to talk about the instructional comparison data. And then, when she is done, we are going to hand control over to Christine Thankee, who I'm going to give her the power. And I'm going to speak that up real quick. And she'll be facilitating the different groups who are going to present. So, you guys might want to come up forward and be able to do that.
You're on. All right. I am going to reference, have you referenced the PowerPoint handout that says Florida Large Urban Schools is its progress monitoring? I'm just going to quickly review this. If you have any questions, myself and the team will be available to answer questions. So, on the second page, you're going to see our gap data for English Language Arts, and what you will see is the comparison of the large urban districts, beginning in 2014, 15, to last year's data. And it shows the percentage of students scoring the level three and above, to average the Florida, the Orange County Public Schools, and then the other large districts in the state. This data was collected from the Florida Public Education Ed stats website. On the next page, you will see that we have given you the data for mathematics and the gaps as well. After looking at that data, we surveyed the large districts to gain insight on what they were doing to close the achievement gap. Those are the questions that were asked on page four. When you look at page five, one of the significant differences was what they were doing with progress monitoring, and the chart gives you a synopsis of what they were doing. With the exception of Dugan, all of the other districts use iReady or MAP for reading and mathematics. And with the exception of Miami-Dade, and this is their first year, they are not using district-wide locally-created assessments. All the other districts are to monitor reading and mathematics, as well as the other state-assessed courses that are used as school grade calculations. If you recall, OCPS discontinued to use these similar benchmark assessments in October of 2014. The next group of data talks about the proportionality of suspensions by subgroup data. There are two slides that capture that. The first slide looks at in-school suspension, and the second slide looks at out-of-school suspension. The data was calculated using survey two enrollment data for each of the school years listed, with the percent of each subgroup representing the overall population. The suspension data was taken from survey five. The reason for the difference in the collection of data is that the DOE does not collect the suspension data in survey two. And so, you will be able to look at the gaps that are there. In some instances, we are doing better than some of those other districts, and in others, we have moved. Again, the team will be available to answer any questions you have after you've had a chance to digest the data.
Madam Chair, school board members, Samantha Jenkins and staff, thank you for the opportunity to present and share the information tonight related to OCPS strategic plan. My name is Christine Thankee, and I'm serving OCPS this year as a doctoral resident with the Harvard Graduate School of Education, under the direction and supervision of Dr. Richard Williams. Joining me tonight are Dr. Williams, Chief of Staff, Dale Kelly, Chief Financial Officer, Barbara Pacheco, Chief Operations Officer, John Morris, Chief Facilities Officer, and Debbie Pedraza and Sherri Bobinski, Director of Media Relations and Senior Director of Foundation of Orange County Public Schools, respectively, and their representative Scott Howlett, Chief Communications Officers. Our goal today is to continue the discussion, as Jessica said, from our last work session, and provide you with an overview of the non-instructional division priorities included in the district's scorecards. As a reminder, the district's scorecards are part of the OCPS strategic plan, and they include these performance objectives that were established back in 2008. They outline the specific measurable objectives, which include longitudinal data to measure progress for the strategic plan. It's important to note that internally, we've already begun to revisit these measures. However, for today's purpose, we're reporting on what currently exists. I'm now turning it over to Dale Kelly, who will provide you with a presentation of data and discuss the highlights for each of the fiscal services.
All right. Next slide. One more. All right. This is just a list of departments within the fiscal division, just to refresh your memory. Next slide. The... Our first division priority is to encourage employees to lead healthy lifestyles through education and the use of health benefits. We have six measurable objectives to support this priority, the first one being is to increase the number of onsite wellness seminars. You can see the results there. You'll note, 1718, we were down a bit. That was due to the Cigna Wellbeing Coordinator. She was a... She had health issues, believe it or not, ironically, as well as she ended up departing, and so, we had a gap in coverage there for a number of months. As well as, we found that the onsite seminars are a little difficult to get everybody from one work location there at one time. We think maybe more the emphasis needs to be placed on webinars where they can...
Dale, pause for a second.
Yes.
They're looking for their handout. You got the right one, but it's not on the consultant. These are separate.
It's on Word docs.
It's on Word docs.
We didn't get it.
It's the one staying in review with us individually. We should have them.
Yeah, I wanted hard copies of it right on, but it's okay.
Absolutely.
All right. We'll go ahead. So, anyway, that first budget objective, we think more the emphasis needs to be really on the second one, which is the increase in the access and number of webinars from vendors for all employees. You can see the results there, fairly consistent from year to year, and the target of 16, we still think that is achievable. Next slide. The next budget objective is locations participating in the onsite seminars. There, again, we had the similar downfall in 1718 for the same reasons. We still think the target of 16 is achievable for that area as well. The next is the increase, the criteria for Motivate Me, and that, just to remind you what that Motivate Me is, that's where we give incentives to our employees to do their annual physical, to take a health assessment, and there's other health screenings they can do and achieve a monetary reward for that, to encourage them to keep up with their health. So, you can see the results there, and that's been fairly successful as we continue to move with that one. The next slide is to reduce the percentage of members not utilizing benefits in our target plan. That's the local plus in-network plan, which has the least compliance among our three plans within our health program. And you can see, we have made some movements. We've actually exceeded the target there. And then, the last one is to reduce the percentage of members in all plans that do not use their benefits. And we consider those people kind of like faceless patients. They're the ones that don't go at all. We want to least encourage them, you know, to do their physical and use the preventive healthcare that's made available to them through the plan. All right. Next slide. Here are the strategies that support those... This goal, and you can see, first is to promote services available through our Cigna Onsite Wellbeing Coordinator. We want to increase those onsite seminars, as well as the number of unique locations, and increase the number of unique members to access those webinars. Promote that Motivate Me program and reevaluate the plan to make sure it is effective, and believe it is effective, so we want to continue to press on with that Motivate Me, and initiate a campaign for the local plus in-network plan, and continue to encourage participation of all our members in all three plans that we have. And then, lastly, to contact members who have not utilized any of the benefits. All right. Next slide. The next priority for the fiscal division...
Trying to go warp speed, you got to...
Just... I'm so sorry.
Yes.
The red and the green, it's driving me crazy, because on some slides, the red means we haven't met our target goal, and then, some slides, it looks like it just dictates that we went up from the previous year. So, what should be red and what should be green?
So, if you remember from the first session, although we may change this in the future, the green or red designation is based on the previous year.
So, it's not based on the target?
It's not based on the target. Now, there are instances where, I believe it's in communications, where their current numbers so far shoot over the target that it was ridiculous to put that in red, because they were like 170%, I think, of their actual target. So, in instances where they far overshoot the target, but compared to last year, they're slightly down, we didn't put red there, but everywhere else, it's a comparison of last year to this year.
Thank you.
We're having discussions about whether or not that ought to change in the future, but I didn't want to change it midstream.
But red denotes not going in the right direction.
From last year.
So, sometimes red is where it increased, sometimes where it's decreased, depending on whether the goal is to go down or the goal is to go up.
Correct.
So, red, green doesn't equal plus or minus. Thank you.
Okay. Continuing on. The next priority for the fiscal division is to maintain the highest financial reporting standards. We have three measurable objectives to support this priority. The first is to complete the annual financial report by September 11th. That date is really dictated by Florida statute. You can see how we've trended there. We've always met that, based on that target. The second one is to complete the comprehensive annual financial report by December 31st, and that is where we submit our CAFR to two separate organizations, the GFOA, Government Finance Offices Association, as well as the ASBO, which is the Association of School Business Officials. And they review our financial statements and make sure that we are complying with their excellence and reporting standard, and so, that is the target date of 12/31. Next slide. The last measurable objective is to obtain 80 combined hours of continuing professional education credit, and that's important, because that makes sure those statements are accurate and that we receive those awards. It's important that the... At least the top two people within that division that are responsible for those statements get the necessary training, as governmental accounting standards are changing every year, and there's new standards that have to be applied and implemented. Next slide. Lastly, these are the strategies that help support the maintaining the highest financial reporting standards. And we want to prepare a detailed year-end closeout. For example, the memo just went out this week for the current year closeout that we're preparing for. We want to manage our audit process to ensure quality and timely completion of the CAFR. We need that auditor's opinion in order to submit that, so it's important that that stays on time. And we want to intend relevant continuing professional education courses, so they do maintain the necessary skills to prepare those reports. And with that, I'll turn it to Dr. Williams.
There are seven departments that fall under the Human Resources Division, and they're listed on the screen. Our first priority in the HR scorecard is to increase the percentage of high-performing recruited instructional candidates. Recruited candidates measures the percentage of candidates that are offered a teacher position and sign a letter of intent to teach for Orange County Public Schools, at job fairs that range from the Florida Department of Education, straight Florida teaching, to teacher job fairs at UCF, FSU, FAMU, UF, Auburn University, University of Georgia, BCU, South Florida, the Penn State Consortium, and the Florida Fund for Minority Teachers, FFMI. In fact, City Year and OCPS received a grant from the Westgate Foundation that pays for the cost of test prep, the GK, the general knowledge exam, and the application fee of $75 for those with City Year that choose and are recruited to teach with Orange County Public Schools. The placement rate of recruited candidates is 77%. Percentage of recruited candidates with 3.0 or higher. Percentage for this measurement correlates or is aligned with the candidates that are recruited and work for Orange County Public Schools. This assists the HR division in determining how well those that are recruited perform based on their IPS score, instructional practice score. The percentage of recruited candidates with a 3.0 or higher is 81.2%. And some of the strategies that are used, analyze HR processes to retain high-performing teachers, train hiring managers for retention and onboarding, document and categorize our reason codes for termination, and allow them to implement strategies to mitigate and reduce teachers exiting OCPS. Implement new application tracking and onboarding system. Implement critical shortage, supplement targeted schools, supplement focused priority schools, supplement and other monetary incentives. And we work hand-in-hand with teaching and learning to ensure that teachers that qualify for supplements are compensated. Increase the retention of instructional staff. The retention rate is the percentage of teachers retained from one school year to the next. This captures the number of teachers who are active in a position on the first day of pre-planning, and those that are still active the following year on the first day of pre-planning. The retention rate is 89%. The survey is given to all new employees at PREO, or Pre-Employment Orientation. That measures the percentage of new hires that are satisfied with the hiring process and the stellar customer service delivered by the HR division. And the result for this is 99.9%. We're also researching distributing surveys to new teachers to Orange County Public Schools three months from the actual start date. Strategies that are in place that we're utilizing. Increase placement rates from recruiting events and focused recruitment efforts at high-year locations and events. For instance, there was an appreciation breakfast this morning that was held throughout the district for our senior interns. Analyze supplements and incentives. As mentioned earlier, we work hand-in-hand with teaching and learning. Increase touchpoints with OCPS interns before, during, and after internships. The HR division visits every intern that is with us in Orange County Public Schools. Develop and implement an aggressive, comprehensive marketing campaign. Be, we want all our teachers to become our hero. We have billboards. We work through social media. Increase early onboarding. Once again, we had a great event this morning, another touchpoint with our interns. Analyze trends relating to teacher evaluation scores. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Operations Division. Here, we have listed as well the seven departments that compose the Operations Division. You can go to the next slide. All the Operations Division scorecard measurements support the call of having a safe learning and working environment. The first division priority is to enhance prevention, intervention, and response programs. These priorities relate to the safety and security of our students and staff. There are five measures that we use in order to track the progress of these priority, and those are: The first one is percent of allocated school physical security improvement funds. Since the creation of this measurement, departments have undergone some restructuring, which have resulted in the relocation of some functions and related strategies. In this case, the asset protection function is not housed under facility services. That group oversees the funds and implementation of the security improvements. This measurement reflects the level of usage of those funds allocated during a business cycle to make sure that we support our physical security improvement projects. Last year, we were able to achieve 84% of all funds utilized that... That means that out of every $100, we were able to use every $84. The remaining are carried over to energy for us to continue the implementation of those different strategies that we might have in place. Second is the percent of school-based emergency drills completed. This measurement reflects the percentage of all school sites that have met the requirement for the year of completing all their drills. And of course, this one includes drills like fire, active assailant, emergency equates, and severe weather. Last year, we accomplished 100%. That is the requirement, and we track these on a monthly basis to make sure that we can track the progress and assure that we're able to help in case they fall a little bit behind. Next page. No, okay. A third, percent of staff completing the standardized preparedness training. This measurement reflects the number of school-based personnel and non-school-based administrators and technical staff that have completed all required preparedness training courses or events for the year. Last year, we had a slight regression from the year before, but this was the first year that we require for all non-school-based administrators and technical staff to also take those trainings. So it takes a little bit of time for them to be able to get accustomed to that requirement. We hope, and we know that this year we're going to do way better and will be able to be at our goal. Again, that one is 88.4% of our team. Next one is the numbers of school arrests. This measurement reflects the data provided by the Division of Juvenile Justice as it relates to the arrests conducted by law enforcement agencies involving students of all grades. I think this was something that I went back and double-checked as we were discussing the numbers. That includes all grades from elementary to high school. Last year, we finalized 250.
Let's adjust the six to 12, you know?
No, no, I corrected that. That's what I wanted to make sure. However, as we spoke, again, 88% of the arrests are composed of elementary, I mean, I'm sorry, middle school and high school. Sorry, sorry. Middle school and high school students, not elementary. Middle school and high school students. The groups that we have with the body, we know the data is elementary, K-8, ELC, alternative, and of course, high school and middle school elementary. So we know those numbers for those, but you can see 88% come from middle school and high school. So the remaining 12% comes from the combination of these other groups. Just for you to give you a sense, because I know that as we look at the 250, what does that represent? Based on our last year count of students, that represents .15% or less than .15% of our student population. So it's very, very small. Next, we have the fifth and last measure.
Reverend, for one question, don't want to delay it, but if you could come back, you just mentioned the percentage of students actually involved. If we could get the in-school, out-of-school suspension numbers. We have the total percentage, but I suspect the number of students actually represents a smaller percentage. So if you could get back to us with not the total suspensions divided by the student population, but the total students being suspended. Clear?
Because some students will be suspended multiple times.
It was a much higher number than I expected, and I think that would be the difference. Thank you.
The fifth and last measure for this priority is the number of Level 4 incidents that take place on our school. These are all Level 4 incidents. This number is run by our Teacher Learning Division. And the reason that we track it and we look at it is because we want to make sure that it connects in any way with all the strategies that we have in order to reduce arrests. And we just want to make sure that we track and we see if there's any effect on this number. In this case, last year, we ended up to 1,786. Again, this is less than 1% of our population based on our count of last year students, a very, very small number. Next, we have the strategies that support that goal. And as you can see, all these strategies are supported by all the different district personnel because safety and security is everybody's business. So everybody supports it on the staff, and we also work with our standard agencies, law enforcement agencies. And the one that leads this objective are the district police, safety and emergency management, facility services, and teacher learning. And those are, I can go over them if you would like. The first one is to reduce safety and security.
Reverend.
Yes, okay.
That's okay, because you guys did a great briefing for all of that.
Okay. Next is our second division priority is to ensure safety, increase efficiency through the increased plan review and inspection passage. These priorities are related to the code inspections and review conducted by our building compliance office. Having an internal BCO department allows for us to meet the demands of our active construction program. There are two measurements that help construct the progress of this priority, and those are: first, percent of inspection pass of initial inspection. What is important for us is that we know that we have to go out and make sure that they pass and that we inspect every single of our projects, but it's only going there is making sure that they're prepared for it because we don't want to go back. We want to create efficiencies. We want to make sure that the program doesn't get delayed. In this case, we have no progress from the previous year, so we had 86%. So that's why you see that we got a color. We stay pretty much in the same range. What I can tell is that 96% is a very good rate for these type of services. The next one is the percent of plan reviews approved upon initial review. Same concept. We want to make sure that we pass those plans are reviewed and passed the first time around. We don't want to touch them again. That doesn't create efficiencies for the contractors, designers, or our team. So that's why we track it. I can tell you, as I don't want to read all the other strategies that we have here, but the team that have implemented is that they do provide training for all those contractors and designers. We have made it contractually a requirement as far as the contract, so they're able to send their team to be trained. They manage and they make sure that those people that have to be trained show up there. And that is a great success. And we also use our website as a great tool. So in case they do provide some kind of opinion, they post it on our website to make sure that it's available for the other teams. This one is, of course, all these strategies are supported by designers and contractors, and is led by our Building Compliance Office, Facility Services, and Procurement Services Team. Thank you.
All right. Communications Division. You'll see on the next slide, the four departments that make up the division. And it's important for historical context to remind you that the division was created in July of 2016. All of these departments existed, but they didn't exist together as a division. And part of that included bringing the foundation under the governance of the district at that same time, July 2016. During that first year, Scott did an excellent job of looking across the division for redundancies. So in July of 2017, he brought community resources under the foundation so that all of the team members who are out seeking time, talent, treasure, and testimony resources for our schools were working together. So please keep that in mind as we look at these measurable objectives. The first is to increase the total number of school and district partners in education. As you can see, as of 2017, 18, we have far surpassed the original target. This is exclusive of charter schools. Charter schools work with their own community outreach, but we will be updating this target. The second that you see is increasing the total number of school volunteers. Again, we have far surpassed that target. We'll need to reset that for the years coming forward. And in addition to these two, we'll need to add some targets for the foundation itself. Specifically, we're looking out of the 37 KPIs, key performance indicators that we track for our foundation board on a quarterly basis. We're looking at very high level such as the total revenue broken down by what we actually raise to help support the district and then what we manage as the fiscal agent for school and district funds. And then the other piece we'll want to add is the total donors. In the future, this partners in education number will be a subset of that. We're working on integrating our two software systems that manage those at this time. We'll go ahead to the next slide. This particular measurable objective has to do with how many schools are able to receive the five-star award from the Department of Education. Schools that have reached a grade level of C or higher are eligible to submit a portfolio for this award. And the portfolio is about a series of community engagement criteria. When those community engagement criteria are checked off, having an active school advisory council, having faith-based partners, having partners in education. We know that those community engagement strategies support student achievement. So we want to make sure that as many of our schools can achieve that as possible. Again, we're well past our target, so we'll need to reset that. And I had a question come about how many of our five-star schools are Title I schools? For this year, out of the 84 schools that received the award, 18 of them are Title I schools. So 21.4% of our five-star schools are Title I, and about 18% of our Title I schools are receiving this award. So I wanted to make sure to provide that to you. On this page, you can see the strategies that we are focused on.
Let's skip that.
Yep.
Go.
Very good. Thank you.
Media relations is under the goal of sustained community engagement as well. We started with a baseline in 2015, 16. That grew in 16, 17 due to two significant reasons. One, our team grew by two. We went from two staff numbers to four, which helped our pitches that year. And also, our superintendent was the state superintendent of the year and a finalist for national superintendent of the year. So we had some momentum from that. We were in the news in a very positive light, and we became a go-to district for educational publications as well as local media due to those, due to that reason. In 17, 18, we saw a bit of a drop. We attribute that to two things: weather coverage of several significant hurricanes as well as the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas shooting. We know from experience that when you have a few dominating stories in the news, it is hard to change the focus of the media because they want to stick to the big story. We do expect our number to be back closer to our target as our monitoring has indicated so far this year. The next measurable is our social media presence. You will see that we took a huge leap from 15, 16 to 16, 17. Again, that was due to the creation of our division and the creation of a social media manager whose sole job and responsibility was to post on social media. The first year, we were posting like crazy. We were very excited to have a social media manager, and we took it to the next level. We scaled back a little bit in 17, 18 because we really made a deliberate decision to focus on content and enhance the appearance of our posts. So we started including graphics and pictures and really improving the content that we shared with our audience. So we scaled back just a little bit, but you'll see the difference in the post from 16, 17 to 17, 18. The quality or the enhancement of the appearance of the post was upped. Also, on the website, the website is counted in that measure because of we post our own stories on the website. We changed the format of the website, which reduced our story count a little bit. We went from six stories to three stories on the front page, which counted towards that number. The third measurable is the sentiment of the district. This data source is measured by an external media monitoring vendor. Our primary focus is on the positive and negative sentiment. We do not have a target for neutral because it's neutral. We really want to move the needle on positive and negative. We did have, we feel that in 16, 17, there was a bit of some accuracy issues with our vendor, which we have gotten worked out. So hence, we feel that the true sentiment for 17, 18 is more of an accurate picture of the sentiment data. And lastly, the national and state story pitches and placed. You can see we had a significant jump to 16, 17. Again, that was due to Dr. Jenkins being named state superintendent and finalist for national superintendent of the year. It really did help put us on the map on a national level and international level. Anytime you have an opportunity to use that momentum, we keep connections, we continue to grow our connections with national media, and we've done a really good job of that. As you can see, in 17, 18, that number continues to grow. We also attribute the growth in 17, 18 for stories placed due to our positive coverage that we received in the aftermath of Hurricane Maria and the displaced students from Puerto Rico. We received excellent coverage nationally and internationally due to that unfortunate event that we actually did really well in the aftermath.
Going to switch over now to the extended scorecard. Two areas, let me just for the board's understanding. Previous boardman, forgive me for redundancy. So hundreds of measures. Previous board helped us disseminate which ones needed to go on the front page or the district scorecard. Other measures relegated to the extended scorecard. So every division has additional measures on the extended scorecard. For IT and for facilities in particular, after the first couple of years and under such capable leadership, those measures were relegated to the extended scorecard. So you won't see on the front page or the front scorecard measures in those two areas. That does not mean we may not switch something back this year or in coming years to say it needs to be on the front page. I don't know that the general public differentiate between front scorecard and extended scorecard. So John will go over briefly the facilities measures that are on the extended scorecard. Robert Curran, who's our new CIO, gets a pass. You have the information on their extended scorecard. I did not ask him to present. He's actually in the process of reviewing and probably changing some of those strategies and measures. So you have his information available, but he will not be actually presenting it. So John, you're on.
Okay. Thank you. So those are the eight departments that make up facilities. And then going into the extended scorecard, the first goal is intense focus on student achievement. That's a district-wide percentage that we obtained through teaching and learning. The next one, the safe learning and working environment, is addressed by the ACFI, Safety Inspections and Work Orders. And we've improved, we steadily improve that percentage on responding to those, reduction of time it takes to respond to those. They come in, the work orders come in, and we rank them as priorities one, two, or three based on the importance and the safety of the issue that comes in, and then we address it in that order. So we prioritize what comes to the work orders. The next one is efficient operations. We just list the schools that we completed relief to replacement, comprehensives, and swing sites for that objective. Next, efficient operations and energy efficiency. We were at 16.5 kilowatt per hour and reduced it down, continued to reduce it down. We, a little bit of a heads up, we are analyzing solar energy right now and talking to OUC and Disney on their solar farms. So we'll bring more information to the board along those lines in our facilities presentation in April. The next one is the HVAC reliability. That's an ongoing issue with air conditioning in the schools, and it really goes along with the age of the school and the age of the equipment, but we're trying to stay on top of it to where we can address HVAC issues the first day or two and see what the problem is. Even if we have quarter parts we bought over the last couple of years, portable chiller units that you can hook up to a elementary school on a trailer or a flatbed, and that can cool school if their system is down. So we've taken precautions to try and eliminate school being totally down. The next one is the completion of work orders. We had a slight decrease from 16 and 17. We were at 16 days and back up to 18 days. And part of that issue was the hurricane that occurred and that put a hamper on addressing a lot of the stuff in a timely manner just because of access to roads and access to a lot of the stuff in a timely manner just because of access to roads and access to issues and debris and stuff like that at the schools. Next one, efficient operations, is minimize improvements to portables by reducing costs. And believe it or not, we are still in a decline of having a total number of portables in the district. It's minimal, but it is still a decline. And we focus on that and what really is necessary for schools between us and teaching and learning. Starting in usually around October of each year, we'll go out to the schools, talk to the principals, and talk to the teachers, and walk the sites and see what everybody needs as far as portables, and if they don't need portables, we relocate them or, you know, just move them off the site if they're not using them. So it's a hand-in-hand issue that we work well with teaching and learning to minimize the number of portables on every site, so we don't have empty portables sitting out on the sites. The next one is to sustain community engagement. We continue to have multiple community meetings per project. We usually have three on an elementary school, four on middle schools, and up to five on high schools, depending on what the issues are. We've already had several meetings already on Site 8, which is one of the relief high schools coming out, keeps the community informed about where we are and how the site's set up. The other one is to greet board members quarterly. We continue to set up quarterly meetings, and we'll go through each district with their board member and give them a heads up on projects coming up, where the projects are in design or construction, and what projects have been completed. With that, I'll turn it back over to the superintendent.
Thanks, John. Thank you, team. You actually did go at warp speed. We're only four minutes behind schedule now, so I appreciate that. Let me just mention a couple of things, and then we'll certainly take any questions and clarifications. It is certainly a challenge for staff as we've been going through these and reviewing. It's very hard for us not to jump forward to what we're doing currently. This is a review of the strategic plan, not of our plans and renovations and changes for next year. Give you a prime example, because I'm sure board members probably thought of it. One of the strategies HR is looking at is around our exit interviews. That is a current strategy that we're working on. She should have been reporting it as though it was already in place in the strategic plan. Very hard for us not to keep crossing over that line. So I wanted to remind you, this is what is currently in place in your plan. Secondly, the extended scorecard has a disadvantage in that it does not list the actual outcome from year to year. It lists the baseline year and then current. So when John's talking about his work orders and there's a red arrow saying we went down, you only see the first year that was measured and the current year. You think, that's not right. It actually went up. No, the other year is not listed by design in the extended scorecard. Maybe a fallacy that we want to correct in the future, but that's another example of something that we would love to correct, what we are reporting on the current scorecard that is in place. Happy, Madam Chair, to listen to, and by the way, we will also certainly continue to take your thoughts on measures even after the handoff, when we have to work on the particular objectives. Still happy to take further input. That being said, if there are any questions or clarifications on the current scorecard and extended scorecard, we're happy to answer that before we move on. Madam Chair.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you, team.
Thank you all. Great job.
IT is still, the IT portion of the extended scorecard is still on our website. Anybody can still look at it. We're just not going over it here.
All right. Thank you, everyone. So two different, two different whole sessions on teaching and learning information as well as non-instructional. So there's a lot of information for you to condense and pull together, and so we're going to try to use this next exercise to help you do that. And also, but that's not your only input. Obviously, your input is some of your past experiences, what you've experienced through your work as sitting on the board. I know some of you are new, but you've heard a lot from your constituents. A lot of the information that we've heard about is really going to fall under the strengths and weaknesses, not necessarily opportunities and threats. So that might be a little bit where you're going to have to pull a little bit more from your past information and some of the information that you have due to your position and what you're working with. So we're going to use a situation and analysis to perform this next piece. Just as a reminder, I'm going to skip over this one. Strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. I've included in your packet, and you'll see, and I'll talk about it real quick here. Many times when I do, we do a SWOT analysis and we're doing discovery. We actually do interviews. This was a different format, right? Getting a presentation. But what I thought might be helpful to all of you as we start pulling together our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats is to get an idea of what kind of questions you should be answering when you're talking about strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. I'm going to start saying SWOT. That's a lot to say. So I'm going to start with the strengths and just really, really quick, kind of give you some ideas of some questions you should be asking yourself when you're talking about what am I looking for when I'm talking about strengths. So remember, strengths are things that are internal to the organization and that are helpful for us. So strengths, for example, and I've included them up here, what's working well, what things does the organization do right, what do you do better than anyone else? This is really going to play into some of the future work that we're looking at. What advantages does the OCPS have? If you think about your quote-unquote competitors, you know, maybe that other school districts as people are moving into Florida, deciding where to send their, you know, where they want to live, where they want to send their kids to school, or in other aspects. So, you know, what's something that really sets you apart and attracts your customers? In your case, it's students. It can be donors. It can be different things. From a weaknesses perspective, the questions that you want to be asking yourself are what are the internal challenges that the OCPS is currently facing. You've heard some of that from those previous presentations. What kind of thing would you look to improve? What challenges have you faced in your dealings with OCPS? That's a good reference point for yourself as you look forward, look at the information that you are going through. And what maybe do others look at OCPS might be the areas of weakness? Opportunities, again, when we get to opportunities and threats, I think this might be a little bit harder, so, you know, relying on that information. But again, these are things that are external, things that you don't necessarily have significant control over, but that could be, in this particular case, could be really helpful to you, something that you can really work with. So what are something, what's something that could be out there that could really help the organization prosper? You know, maybe there's a really great community organizations that support OCPS or items like that. And some things to look at, I think I've written here and have it up here, but, you know, what's some trends that you may be aware of that would be something that would be, something that you would want to take advantage of. So that could be a technology trends that might be something that would offer opportunities, financial trends, news trends, whatever those cases may be. Think about the bigger picture and what those particular areas that may provide those opportunities. And then lastly is around the threats. Again, this is the same situation where we're talking about external, but these are things that could hurt you. So again, if we're looking at financially, you know, technology, it could be governmental situations. It could be, you know, the hurricane situation that happened with Puerto Rico, right? Perfect example of a threat that could possibly be out there again in the future. So these are kind of things that you want to be considering as we go through this next exercise. And if these questions help spark some of your thoughts around that, that was my purpose of going through these and helping you with that. So we're going to do this first task, and we're going to do this individually. And I'm going to give you some time to do it. But the very first task that we're going to do is I'm going to ask each of you to create your list of strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And I want you to pick your priorities, right? So what at most are your top eight strengths, top eight weaknesses, top eight opportunities, and top eight threats? No more than eight. You don't have to do eight, but, you know, I want to max you out at eight, eight per area. I want to, you know, think of those questions, try to figure out what those are. And then individually, on each of your stickies, write, stickies, Post-its, I'm sorry. I have a Sharpie there for you, and you have a pile of stickies. There should be at least 32 in each of those, so hopefully, if not, I've got some extras. We're just running a little short. I want you to take the time to, individually on each one of your Post-its, write each one. So don't put all of your eight strengths on one.
One per note.
Each one, one item per sticky. So at most, you'll have 32 filled out for you individually.
Do you need to put SWO or T on?
It would probably help you to put SWOT because we're going to take this information and we're going to pull this together. So.
Do you have this? I didn't see that slide presentation in here.
It's that one. You have to go back to the other one.
It's in the blue.
No, no, no. I'm talking about visual.
Oh, no.
Can you send it to me, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you so very much.
Okay.
You're going to post it in Word docs?
It's already in Word docs.
I didn't see it in there.
It's a separate PowerPoint. It's about Gordon.
Okay.
It's the first PowerPoint.
All right. I saw it.
You're right.
Okay.
That one was, no, that was in the blue folder. They're two, they're two separate PowerPoints in Word docs.
But I didn't see them posted for the agenda today. See, they haven't posted them. Not the pretty one with the painting.
All right. Well.
How much time? We'll do it right now.
Yep. We're going to go ahead and do that right now. I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you 10 minutes. At eight minutes, I'm going to give you a green light. Nine minutes, I'm going to give you yellow, red, and wrap it up is what it is at that point.
Also include the last session.
Yes.
Captured.
Consider all the input that you have.
It's not just tonight.
It is absolutely not just tonight. It is all the teaching and learning, all the non-instructional updates you got, and then your experiences as well.
You already wrote them out?
Yeah. I didn't read it.
Yeah, you have some new.
Okay. So you meant the industry.
Yes.
Not you. It's like a stretch. Oh, yeah. Look at you right there.
Yep, it's there.
Oh, you know what? I'm kind of impressed. And I squished. I'm going to put those in case of a little sugar boost.
Yeah. Put it up here.
Do you want to run that much more?
Okay. And please make sure you write legibly because others are going to be reading this, so just a word to the line.
Yeah. I was already calling her, but when I, when they, when they came up. Okay, but the one that she wants us to do. I don't know. But I expected you to put it on these.
Yeah.
Where do we?
Yeah, sure. That's fine. Right here. Is that better?
Yeah. Eight of these. Okay. 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 Okay.
Candy, you're choice. I knew.
Something a little, you tell it off the board. I was still putting it up. It's like, I don't know. I don't know. Oh, okay. How are we doing? You don't count that. Okay. She just said a lot more than me. I already be here and what? No, I didn't. She had me, I do, yeah. Okay. I think she got it.
You've got two minutes left. We just start wrapping up. Yep, you just hang on to them. And we'll go into the next steps. But to make the next step easier, as you start to wrap up, make sure your strengths are all in one pile, your weaknesses in another, your opportunities and your threats. Okay, make it easier for you.
No weaknesses. Just a little bit. Yeah. Hold on, wait that for you. I haven't been reading.
You've got one more minute, so start wrapping up your last thoughts. Make sure you're firing them. Okay, and that's ten minutes. Couple people still writing furiously. And you, really, we're pretty close. Okay. So I know, big rush to exercise, but the idea is to get your priorities out there. So hopefully, we were able to do that. And hopefully, we'll be able to feed off of each other as we go through the next step. Okay, so you have a bunch of stickies in front of you. Lots of fun noise and colors that are going to be happening here in a minute. And if you did step, if you stepped away, you might want to separate them out in the pile of strength, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. Okay, so what we're going to do next is, we're going to, we're going to place these on the board, but we're going to do it in a very strategic way, not just do willy-nilly, because it'll, it'll, it'll speed things up if we do it this way, actually. So we're actually going to take, take these and put them up onto these boards, but we're going to do them in a very specific way. So I'm going to break you up into teams. And we're going to do, each one going to do one board, and then we are going to cycle through putting all the rest of your items out. And how we're going to do this is, so whoever's working on the strengths board, you take your strengths, you put them up there. But if there's somebody, if they're like somebody else's that you have, you want to make sure you put it like right on top of it, or right, just, you know, start overlapping them and put them close together, right? So you work with your partner, whoever's with you, to get that done. And we're going to spend just like two minutes at every board. So I'm going to start with the first one. We'll do, everybody, everybody will have one board. And then we'll rotate, so whoever's at the strengths will go to the weaknesses. Whoever's at weaknesses will go to opportunities. Whoever's opportunities is going to go to threats. And then back to strengths, right? And so we're going to cycle around, so everybody's going to get their board. So we're going to do this, you know, four different times. And at the end, we're going to have you go back to the original board, and then I'm going to have you do another task there as well. But the idea really is to put like, to like, to like. So we'll start getting an idea of, you know, those things that are popping up as a big priority for everybody. But we can group them together, so we don't have a million of these. You know, we can start, really start to focus on that. Okay? So does this make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so for strengths, we're going to have Angie and Johanna work on those. We're going to have you guys start with weaknesses. All right, Linda and Pam. We're going to have Melissa and Karen, you're going to work on the threats. We're very close here. And then we'll have Kat and Teresa and Dr. Jenkins. Barbara, we'll have you start on opportunities.
I've got the written page.
Okay? All right, so you've got two minutes to do your first one. The opportunities is over here, sorry. Your next threats. Threats are right over here.
I'm coming. Okay. All right. Okay.
Okay, I can meet you.
Think about your strengths. Our strengths, just look at all your strengths. Yeah. Any strengths that's not internal.
Yeah, no. I don't know. Okay. I don't understand. I don't speak. I can see. I thought you said we didn't have. We're going to get those. Yeah, but I didn't do it. I'm the man who always read you to work. Yeah, so. That's an opportunity. But I'm more, no, I can't. I can't say that. We're allowing that. We're saying.
If we've got a weakness, that's the thing. Okay. That's a strength.
Yeah. We're not going to put.
I'm just, let's have a strength. I didn't think.
Okay.
What I made it. Yeah. She's seen you all. You're right. It's going to. So why? I'm outside, we're listening. I'm producing Monday. I'll put them in two Monday.
This was on the community and kind of support. She made up a, yeah, that's definitely.
Just connect to you.
Maybe this one down.
You've got enough space to put it on. Yeah, like that.
Yeah. Okay. But you know what? I'm going to put this one. Hey, you've got fifteen seconds left.
The only reason the populist matters.
Good one.
Good one. Yeah, so they're all still.
Okay, give me your first one.
The first one says, a collaborative community that requires to support us. This one is a business community. So, and one, this one says, a new government, this government is more of a populist.
Okay, so we're at two minutes. You guys have a lot. So you want to try to sort that.
Opportunities. Yeah.
Which one's in the book? I mean, that's, yes. So I guess I'm looking over a little bit bigger.
Okay, okay. We'll do a, we'll do a bigger, we'll do a bigger conversation with everybody, but we need to switch to the next one.
Okay, tell me where we're going.
Opportunities, you go to threats.
Okay.
And you go to strengths. And strengths, we go to the strengths. You go to weaknesses, weaknesses, you go to opportunities.
Let's bring the opportunities. Always. Okay.
What, not next?
Excuse me, where are opportunities next? We're starting. You guys. We're all right behind you. Okay. I only have two.
I said, just a point. And a five, here's another. I don't know. That's a threat, that's a threat. It's going to be external.
Yeah, right. I have four questions.
Another threat that we can't control is state funding. Controlling, yeah. Yeah. We're afraid of state funding.
Wow. I don't want to.
Oh, those are crazy people, at least she's up there.
And they're outside of OCS.
Yeah. So we have no control.
Well, I got, we're having fun again. So I was thinking that was under which, but.
Yeah. So. Yeah, you know what? We found out, think about the last time we did it. We started this mission matched together, it was hard to separate them. Remember that? And Rick had it really hard trying to separate them.
What else you got?
Poverty, we can't control, that's external. Our, the homeless.
Did you see? How? So it's not, anything that might harm our children, that we can't control. So this is OCS. Anything that might hurt our children, we can't. Thank you. That's.
There's some things we cannot stop.
Right, but you just need to be aware of them. Okay, then. They come in that way.
You've got thirty seconds left.
And on the cash, most of this. Yeah, fair. Affordable. So we just.
So we know, that poverty is a threat. Because you cannot decide how you get with different women.
That's correct.
And you can't look at your race, because you cannot decide.
I'm sorry, I know. I just kind of. Help them regardless.
The only thing we can decide while we're on.
Next to W.
Yeah. We're on the risk. Yeah, I love it if I'm on. I'm on the risk.
Go ahead, think the next one.
I know, but we're having fun with it, I love it. Okay. When we don't.
Come on. Come on. No, that would be already, so.
Yeah. Okay. Y'all got some good ones.
All right, we're high enough.
Whatever you go next.
You guys get a strength.
The rocks, we go to.
Now, where do we go next? You're on.
All right. This is, y'all just look for it right away.
I got a bad strength. And it's funding from state. I have district. I don't care. Yeah. That's my life. Yeah, that should go together.
Implementing community and providing engagement and not engage with a team. But it's. And engagement together.
Okay. I like it.
Okay. Employ leading to what happens. Every time somebody walking around and doing this, doing.
Home services. They never. Uh, but I, I down a little bit there.
Financial reporting, much dangerous.
It's so hard. I'm looking at this, because it's not all the people who's up there. Our work. We're taking careful cases. We're trying to match them.
Yeah. All right, right. Our biggest friend is that we should operate. Is there a charge of operation? There's a, there's a, we had. And the mental. Just put it down. And it's, the recruitment of candidates is. And it's.
Okay.
Okay, we're recruited. We've recruited, like we recruited. We had, and Hunter, he's doing a very good job. But now we got DBA at this one. They call everybody.
Security risks. Yeah, that's like.
Yeah. It's a, it's a. No, it's, it's.
Can't beat there. I want to. My mouth, she's, oh, she's, two bucks.
They must not have fun. I do get some.
Do you have money?
That's funny. But I showed.
Okay.
We retain.
Bridget, you're bridge.
We only. Bridge by the job. When they need, they go, we choose. Modern. And. Not the.
Want to. Yeah, half a care. Half a care.
Or. Association base. Yeah. They're. They really. I said, I'm going to go around a little one page.
Okay, yeah, thirty seconds left. Oh, there you go.
We have to say work environment. I can't. I can't. I can't. I can't. Oh, yes.
Well, we all say. I don't know.
I'd like to. I don't know.
We have it right on my sticker.
I feel like it's on there.
Yeah. Right there.
Oh, the graduate guy. I think you're a ten from right. All right, intention rate, you can put it next to grade. You put it right there. Oh, yeah.
Funny, some of the pressure we all raised. Oh, my God. I did have. I mean, we should have. Yeah, right now.
Well, it was, it was seventy-seven percent.
Two separate strengths that we got.
So do you remember which criteria you were looking at? So the one from what? Well, the one was that? Eighty-nine, eighty-eight, I think.
Well, here's the eighty-nine.
Seven, seven.
Yeah. 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 My, it's, I sign made it.
Um, rate and recruitment. Rate of candidates was at seventy-seven. So what's your? You guys finish drawing a little bit?
Once it's, you know, that's. You guys finish.
Are you guys finished drawing your rates?
Yeah.
Only those two? Okay. So that's recruitment rate and attention rate? That's right. That's. Yeah. Okay. I actually made difference. Okay. So I went to this. And I did not bring down the house. I went to this thing where there was a chef in last week. And he doesn't respect my face, but he's organic. And he had walnut cake with Napa cabbage. I think it was so. Also, I want to make a roll, and I looked at their sources, so. I even, I don't believe them. Because all she does is roast the walnuts, put them in a food processor. Put some. And then you put what is tough and chewable with it. So. It's like. We are. Okay. I have a regular, we got it now. Y'all know I have to analyze. You know, I can't stand no niggas. That was. Oh, God. Opportunities. Yeah. Opportunities. They calling them up and doing, I was going, you kidding me? Okay, they took those last night. They were, they were. Okay, thank you all for helping me. See, I didn't have to. I think we just can't. I thought. Boom, loving and let. And I said. We can. Apparently, they're. I can't see. Okay. I do have my reasons. Yeah, it was so good. Not mine. They actually put like the gourmandos bags. And they crush it all up. And they put everything in there. That's not a. And I said, well, we don't have. I said, do we? Do I have that line? We don't. This is what? We had. And which are. I think money. So. All right. They did make them. Excuse me. You going for it? No, I'm going to get a dollar bar. Maybe a little bit. I did not need that. No, this is staring at. Okay. But it was so. I could do that again. It's a. I used to cook all the time. Not much of a time. I love to cook. I love to cook. That's my love language. I eat to cook. I love to cook. I like choppy, especially after a stressful day. Oh, I need you. Give me a knife and a cutting board and just get out of the way. Cooking is my love language. That's how I care for you. That's how I dislike recipes. I'm going to, do I have to peel it or chop it and dye it? How many things do I have to do then? I can get lost. That's how I should, in April, is. How much chopping? And I love gadgets, I have an obsession with kitchen gadgets. Oh, yeah. Okay. This is such a. Your core of science. Yeah, we're good. I really did. I mean, I found. Andy and I both. The drawers. Okay. I do need you. And so the last part of this is. I'm like, I've got to find. It was killing. Hold on.
All right, guys. The last part of this is to pull it all together, okay? So I'm going to, don't go yet, but I'm going to have you go back to your original starting point. So SWO's and T's. And I want you to, I have, I have yours up there, but you have the sticky here. If there's a bunch that are together, you can either circle it, show, you know, show that they're one large group, or you can put, make a bigger sticky and name it whatever it is to be named. Because sometimes they have a lot of different words on there. So we want to try to see if we can name it out. And, and also put on, if there's more than one, put the number of stickies that had that. So if you put a big one on there, and it was like four, just, you know, put, put what it's called and then just a four on there. So we have an idea of those that had a predominant number of those. Just take a couple of minutes and do that in each one of your, just in your own one. You do, this is you do O's and T's, and then we're going to report out on that, okay?
Okay, give me mine again. Do we stay there? We're strengths. What are we doing? We're opportunities. We are a threat. Why, what are we doing? What are we doing? We all want to, we want to put a thing over. If you want to make a one over, a title for it, yeah, exactly. And we put it on the separate chart? Here's yours for. All right. Can we put it on another chart? No, you leave, just you can leave it up there. No, you leave, just you can leave it up there. Put that right on top of it, or... Or you can sort of, you guys gonna use your reading.
Okay. That's okay, you're just combining. So any of those that are combined? You just wanna put a title on it and then a number? So some of these are singular. You wanna see those that are combined? And make sure that, make sure the combinations are right too. This is your kind of chance to make sure that these are joined together, that they should be joined together.
And you have a...
Yeah. Yep.
If you have a, I'm straight, you've been told a bad line.
All right, Marshall, these are boxes. We're gonna, we're gonna walk through.
Business partners, these all go gray.
That's good. With the same one or something else?
Give me a yellow that says business partner.
Okay. Okay, that works.
These are easy for me, it's hard for the... Three on just one, three on.
Three on business partner. So when you're sorry for... Four on business partner?
Yeah.
Fortune. More of a house. Economic. Yeah, not like... They're all economic. They're economic. Gaps. These are opportunities. Or... Do you have a sharpie? Four. Six, seven.
Well, it's leveraging much easier, right?
Related. Is it related to anything else you're saying? No, me too. How about giving you a half of four? Homelessness or just house four? So what do you want to put? Community partnerships.
And I have one, two, three, four, five.
Medical and mental health. Five. Here's got it. Five. Three, four. Okay. Okay, that'd be salaries. Good salaries. Oh, salary. Competitive salaries. I guess you don't get to... I did actually, funny enough. I think I found it on the bottom. Found it in the bottom of the... Outside crime. Crime. No, no.
Yep, I got two of those.
Yeah, it's a make data.
So early warning. Oh, we got one. Yeah. This one is mental health and healthcare. What do those do? Okay.
Three.
I'm students. Okay. So, so... Hopefully he has to... Misses.
Make that great. Yeah.
Yes, well, yeah.
I told him, I said, no, no, he didn't know his name. He didn't, I would say my name.
I was including that.
Why I have to come back? Okay, poverty, C T E degree. So we just... No. Well, the maker's basis, design, and experimental methods. Oh, good. This is today. And all together, we make it a confident, innovative, national innovation.
Innovative?
Yeah.
Innovative?
Innovative, all these are innovative.
I'm just gonna put innovation.
Yes.
That's one. Three. And four. Of course.
Now let's see how we can do this.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
All brain research, you don't sure.
All right, there you go.
We can let that sit up. Yes, that is.
This goes under partnership.
Oh, yeah. Yes, it does. So we combine.
I've struck out.
Two, five.
Your turn. Change that to five? Three, four, five. Do I hear six?
No.
Innovation is six.
Now, innovation is six.
Oh, yeah. Love it.
Now we gotta do a little bit.
Perfect. Still a perfect. Do we stay here with our post rate or go back?
If you go back, we're gonna get an order.
Oh, yes, you can. That turn over. All right, now we can sort. Make it forward. Okay, miniature competence, which, whose performance are we looking at here? That's probably teacher.
Well, you can have some of that one. Thank you.
Well, well, they don't perform. You want to have with the city, let's just...
Let's set it my life.
Let's set it.
Okay. Any pretty mind up session? Very pretty. Come to my house. Is it too hard to slide under? Pickle room. Karen was the same way. What did I just have to do? And the health organization.
When I watched, you remember the cabinet? No, 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 we're gonna give it to you.
I'm not gonna go.
I can read, I can read to you like I will.
You're doing a great job.
I had a teacher one time when I'm like, can I do anything? And she's like, well...
You can get that redo with the hospital.
That's all my nurses, she's... I spent a whole day in her closet, revided everything, labeled, categorized everything. She was a phone. And it's such a great gift. Well, that's what, it's a gift of time and organization, because that's what she couldn't get to. But it made her crazy in there and, you know, and I love that stuff.
They do help.
At least you know you have sex with your secretary. Yes, I think it's more like as a gift. My daughter-in-law let me do their laundry. I was gonna say. He loved it. And I don't expect you to be bitter. It doesn't have to fade away. But the walking is a great thing. Partly I said to my son, I said, you've got too much room. You should have more than... Yeah, what she needs more. You don't mind Alan and his space. No. Taking over his... Maybe blue and wonder.
Well, you think they would be a...
Okay, I know, but not the sweet. That's gonna go under. Not a business, not a business.
I'll get a point.
Have a better chance of getting more individuals or... I like it. I love it. I love it.
Okay, so we got one sitting out by itself.
They hit no budget. I still think they talk about teachers. One of the board... Let's bring back the board member to the board. It makes a little bit of sense on that. There we go. I think you tell us if you do. We used to have a drag when we were allowed to drag. I know, and the last... Okay. Here we go. Awesome, thank you. Well, once again, we're less, but that's okay.
You're fine, you're fine. That's absolutely right.
Good job, good job.
Okay, how was that?
Okay. Yes, exactly. No, we were gonna leave no one behind.
Yes, we have that military philosophy. All right, so we're just gonna do a... We're gonna do a quick report out. So we're gonna go in order. So I'm gonna have you guys start and report out on what you had here. But go through like your numbers that are highest. So, you know, in your case, there's a four and your threes and your twos. And give us like your top eight that are on here, and I'll capture them as you talk about what you have up there. Okay?
All right. Now we have the top.
School choice. School choice. Graduation rate. What was it?
Graduation rate.
Graduation rate?
Okay.
Modern school buildings? Teacher retention? Finances? And then we'd like to combine school choice and C T E. Since they're basically the same.
School choice and C T E.
Okay, so... Community support, school choice, C T E, graduate, modern school buildings, teacher retention and finances.
Those will all have three or four.
Okay. Okay. How do you guys feel about this list? Does this look like it's representative of where your priorities are around strengths?
I wanna know what else did you get listed?
Oh, okay. So the things I had two were diversity of population, great staff, teachers, increase in the arrests of students, extracurricular activities, arts.
And what are this one?
Sorry. Um, communication strengths, improved data, organization's level of self-reflection, analysis, parent liaisons, rigor A P, professional development, um, Naviance?
Naviance.
Um, strengths recruitment of candidates, strengths efficient operation, depth of understanding of data, employees leading toward healthy lifestyles, enhancing prevention and intervention to promote a safe work environment, strengths of the district, reputation, strong superintendent and district leadership.
Did she write that down for us?
Strong diverse board.
She hasn't written them.
Placed in regional geography downtown Disney foundation for O C P S. Okay. Great, thank you very much.
And what was the caption for that?
Strengths.
And you?
Strengths.
Oh, okay. No, I mean, what was the title you gave it?
Those were singles.
Those were the singles.
Those were singles, just the ones.
Oh, those were the singles?
Yeah.
Oh, my God. Those are your major strength, you call it.
Extracurriculars.
It's interesting to see how it falls out of the mall. Okay.
Okay, um, let's go ahead and do weaknesses. You guys wanna, can you, again, can you go from biggest to smallest?
I'm just doing it.
Okay. So we have eight that were all like three or more, then the others are singles. So the highest, actually by seven, was weaknesses, achievement gaps.
Achievement gaps?
Yes. Falling into, all the rest fall into the three or two categories. Okay, teacher retention. There's gonna be...
Discipline.
And some will be, some will think of it as opportunity, yeah, all of it. Uh, communication. Teacher morale. Social and emotional, that was for both teachers and student, or staff and students. That was not one of the other. And the others that are twos... Wait, was social and emotional was part, is that part of the teacher morale? No.
No.
No. And that's for, that's for employees and students. And then we have medical and mental support. And the last is early warning indicators.
Did you say medical marijuana?
Medical. Not enough. Yes, we don't need dispensary.
I don't know why the superintendent might share with Alan.
Thought you heard that, huh? Do you wanna run through your singles, just so we can hear what else is there? The singles are teacher recruitment, which is different from teacher retention. Intense focus on data collection and testing, loss of teacher professional judgment, lack of mentors, attendance rate of students. Learning gains are stagnant. Guidance and career counselors. Data security risk. Says, uh, results of each department scorecard, school level administrator rating and teacher attendance. Any surprises or anything anybody wants to mention or they didn't hear? Okay, nice. Okay, well, do you talk to... Okay, opportunities. Our group is known as the queens of consolidation. Uh, okay, the highest ranking was number seven for innovation. Let's see, innovation as an opportunity. The next highest was number, was with six, community partnerships, which goes hand in hand with business partnerships, which was the number five, which goes hand in hand with number four, which was business and community support. They're all so tied in there, they could have been one, but here's the key point. We put them all together and we have the ability to move the legislature and the governor. So they're all kind of opportunities for a legislative approach, but they all have a big common thread. Um, okay, were we getting all that?
No, I got community partnerships.
Yeah, the partnerships and what was the... And the other one was business and community support. Kind of all the same. As much as we consolidated, now they're looking at...
But you got to say legislated, because that's what, what?
Yeah, and, yeah, with the thinking being that all of these are strengths or opportunities because it gives us the opportunity to move the legislature. And a governor who seems to be more of a populist governor than we've had in a while, he might be more inclined to listen to large group of indicators. Okay, so you got the innovation, you got the, you got the business, the community and the other one. And teacher recruitment, we saw as an opportunity. And we got about five votes on that. And internships, two votes on that. It's only two, but... Okay? Yeah, great. And that takes your everything. Everybody's got somehow swept up underneath there.
Good job.
That's all right.
Ready to go.
All right, and last but not least, one, do you guys?
Your script.
Go for it.
All right.
Come on, Melissa. Go, Bella, go.
So our number one outside threat was legislature funding. That had eight. And then seven was housing economic gaps. And then our two threes, which was outside, really not afraid of this, but out crime and safety. So outside crime. Outside pressures. You said that was coming? That was three. Another three we had was mental health. Flash healthcare. And then we have twos. Um, our twos are social media. Meaning used by the kids and by parents. Teacher, um...
Number of qualified applicants for the workforce, teacher candidates.
Teacher recruitment?
Yeah.
Teacher, so we call it teacher recruitment?
Recruitment.
Economic opportunities to change the profession for teachers or better salaries offered for other jobs, so.
Competition.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, workforce competition.
Compensation.
Compensation, I like that.
It's not just compensation, because.
No, I know, but it's catchy. Just stay with us, it's catchy for just a second. Competition, competition, I kinda like that.
I like that.
And you're right, it is other things. Quality of the work.
Consolidation thing.
And then the rest are singles.
Rest are the singles.
Sure, the singles we had were union relations. Why is that a threat?
Well, because it could change in the future.
Okay.
So you have a new vote coming up, you could have a situation where you could have a union.
It's external and you can't control it.
External. And it could be, it could go badly.
We perceive, perceive this rigid or not good partners. Changing demographics. Flexibility of local control of resources and transportation, students and stuff.
So I think we did a pretty darn good job of pulling together a lot of information and just gelling it down to these few key areas. This isn't supposed to be an exact science, but it's just giving us an idea directionally of what is really moving us. And so we're gonna go to the next step, which is to talk about the impact on our strategic map. And then we're gonna look at these and see what we think potentially might be some impacts there based on this. So let me go ahead and flip over to that particular piece. And good job, everybody. Sometimes that can take like a week. So to do it in less than an hour is pretty, pretty, pretty interesting. Okay, so you guys are now really becoming familiar with our strategic map and what this looks like with these organizational drivers, the market differentiators, and those objectives being the three key areas where we're gonna be looking at potential impacts. Just as a reminder, our, the map that we're working with right now is the OCPS 2020 plan. And I hopefully you guys are more intimately familiar with it. And so we're gonna pull those pieces and talk about them each individually right now. So we're directionally, we're just trying to get a feel for how accurately do we think this still represents our, our direction? And if not, where potential issues could be. We're not trying to problem solve right now, we're just trying to directionally figure out if we think these are stable or not. And so we know much, how much more work we think we're gonna have to be doing. So particularly around the vision, mission, and values. We wanna check, now remember, typically at the top of the strategy map, those don't typically change over time as you go down the strategy map, they do. Doesn't mean you guys can't put your own stamp on it, but we wanna make sure that we're still following this. This particular one, I wouldn't say is necessarily tied to your SWOT. I would say that it's more tied to your purpose. So if you think about, again, we talked about community, children, future, succeed. I'm trying to remember the words off of the.
Bring back up there, that'd be great.
Yeah, I will. So we're gonna look at vision, mission, and values and determine what that looks like, so. Shield your eyes.
Yeah, it's on, it's on the.
Page seventeen.
Page six on this as well.
There it is.
Okay. So keeping these things in mind, and granted, this was a, this was a pretty quick exercise, but directionally, again, I think it's pretty important. Given your vision, let's talk, let's just talk about the vision. Right now, and again, remember, the vision is your desired state, who you wanna be, and how you wanna, what you are aiming for. And right now, the vision for OCPS is to be the top producer of successful students in the nation.
There are points where we already are leading in the nation, and I'm not sure that is a stretchable vision anymore. I don't know if it should be global, if it should be.
In the world?
In the, in the education sphere, you know. I, I think nation is too limiting, especially with how it's bouncing all over the place in different states. I don't necessarily wanna be like other states.
So two of my thoughts on this. And I, y'all may have heard, you talk about, this is word smithing, but the word producer always bothers me a little bit because we're not producing.
Is that a widget?
It's not a widget, it gives me the wrong impression about what we're doing right now with our kids, our children. Secondly, successful. I don't know what people think is meant by successful. They may think it has to do with just academic success or how much money they make when they become adults. And what we're doing right now is so much broader than that. And in the three months I've been here, I've been blown away by how much broader it is than when my kids were in school just 10, 15 years ago. So I agree with you on that this isn't enough of a reach. I don't know that we're the top, but I think that what we're doing is, producing isn't the right word, and I think successful may connotate something even less than what we're doing. I don't have any idea what the words are.
Remember when we said that before, you said, but I don't know why we usually say I'm a product of Orange County public schools. I don't know why we say that either, because it sounds like a widget.
Yeah.
Okay, it was made by, and we're really not made by. But I remember the pain and agony of trying to get to one vision statement. So it's not easy to come up with a replacement, but that was, and I think it's a good time for a refresh or something.
I like the word prosperity that we had.
I love prosperity.
I love prosperous. I like the word thrive.
I like thrive. I don't, I don't like prosperous. I like prosperity.
Right.
But to me, it also talks about our goal is just in financial terms.
Right.
And I think we're more, it's civic engagement, community contributions and.
Well, for our kids. Prosper is different than prosperity, it has a different connotation. Prosper, or children are thriving and prospering is a different connotation.
Right.
So I wanna kinda go down where you're going. Where my perspective on this is that I'm looking at, at the end of their school career, are they able to be, not associate, not on any scale of socioeconomic, but are they able to be prosperous? When I think of, when I think of thrive, I think of that in a nurturing, encapsulated environment, which is what we want them to do while they're in school. But what do we want the day they walk across? I mean, that's how I see that vision piece, is what is it that we want the day they walk across the stage of graduation?
I like the word prepared.
I, I use that in, in a lot of my presentations, that my, my measure of, of my own children, was how well were they prepared when they left us for what they went on to next?
Well, how about this, how, and I still, I think we need some direction on how much we wanna spend on word smithing. But my thinking is, I, I want our, our kids to come out prepared, but prepared for what? To, to achieve their goals, because those are gonna be all sorts of different goals. You know, your goal might be financial, your goal might be, have nothing to do with financial, might have everything to do with a rewarding career, so.
Stand for the future. Want them to be prepared for the future.
To prepare students for.
Whatever it looks like.
And keep in mind too, you gotta vision and. Mission's gotta be more grounded. Vision is aspirational, very high, very high reach. And then mission is gonna get you grounded.
I also think that we're in a different place than when that was originally, where we had to promote that we foster success. And now, there's no question in most people's minds, at least in the regional and national scene.
We could foster a sense of community or, kinda goes back and forth, that independence and community.
And we gotta, we gotta remember, if we're gonna talk about the vision, it's what we, like, what we wanna be, not what we wanna do. Which is why you had the word producer.
Vision and then mission. Mission is more.
Do you really want us to get there tonight?
No, I'm just trying to, we're trying to get a feel for what's changing, et cetera, so.
Very concerned about the expectations of this evening, if we're gonna try to.
Throwing everything at the wall, see what sticks.
Yeah, so it does.
I love that we're. How many like the word prepared?
We're not, so we took consensus to prepare.
But if we can figure out the directional component, and prepare is definitely a direction. So that helps.
So I like it for the grounded portion, that what we do every day is we prepare students for their future or to, to meet their goals or their future. Prepare doesn't sound lofty enough, but I like it for the mission portion. Because what we do every day is prepare our students. Inspire sounds more lofty, doesn't it?
Yes, much more lofty. Inspire's a wonderful word.
We're just getting some, some verb there.
Inspire. Right now, we're supposed to be working on now, so. Yep, I mean, this is really about, you know, that, that where you wanna go in the future. I think we're getting the idea basically that we definitely wanna change this. I've captured a few words that we said we liked, the pluses, and capturing all of that. Like I said, we're not trying to solve for this tonight, we just wanted to have an idea of what this is looking like. So we'll make sure that we, I've captured these, we'll send those out to you. And I have a feeling that part of the homework we're gonna have you do is start really thinking about, try to crystallize some phrases that really get you to what we're talking about as far as changing the vision. And then we'll start there when we.
I don't think it's a bad idea, at least, is, values are easier to look at the values and the market differentiators. We can do that for a couple of minutes and then get out of here, because it's at least the first stab at it.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We are looking at it now. No, what we want to be. Yes, where we want to be. Yes, correct. Where you wanna be.
I'm not an English major, though.
We were just talking about the word.
I just started to interject, just, I just, I just wanna interject. I know we can hear that there should be some type of change. With the vision, the mission, and the values. And basically, what is it that we, as a collective, really want? Where we really wanna go? Do we wanna do this for us? Or do we wanna do it for the workforce? Or do we wanna do it for the children and the administrators? I remember how very difficult it was and how we had to walk around with a little name card on us for quite some time. And we would get stopped in the hall and we would be asked the vision and the mission, and what were our values. And those of us that could not remember, we would just flip over our little card, which we didn't get any credit for. And those that remembered got rewarded. See what I'm talking about? Now, y'all don't know what I'm talking about, the new people. So what I'm trying to say to us, I think it's wonderful what we're saying and what we're doing. And there should be a change, because there's a new ship in town, all right? That's the change, and more. But do we wanna confuse the workforce, which are basically your administrators? Or do you see yourself on a ship that you just happen to jump on? Some of us, and don't talk about me, some of us will jump off in two years. Some of us will jump off in four. Some of us will keep on going, okay? How far do you wanna take your ship? So I'm just throwing out some thoughts when you go home tonight. I'm trying to get you to see where you wanna go. When we get on a plane, do we say, this is where we're going, and you better get me there, and this is how we're gonna get there? Do we wanna have our staff running around, trying to remember the new mission from the new boy? Get alone, they don't know our names. And they don't know us when they see us. But yet we gave them a vision and a statement that took quite some time for us to master. We're the top producer in the nation, and that was a fact. I'm telling you all, that was a fact. And we all had to give in, and we did it graciously, because we wanted everybody to win. Because some, there was still some delay in why we wanted to do that. But yet we had to come out knowing that we could see ourselves as the top in the nation. And we are on our way there. So now, do we wanna throw that ship away and then come up with another one for two years, four years, eight years? And get your workforce all discombobulated or excited about a new vision? How, think about how you can integrate without interrogating that how you can add on and take yourself to a higher.
So let's do this. I, I think there's a lot of value in not changing something unless that change is. No, what I'm saying, change the mission, unless it is so compelling when we're done with this process that we go, you know what, that's exciting, that takes us. But if it's marginal, and we're gonna go through all of that, it might be worth stepping back and saying, is that worth it?
Take this ship.
So let's walk over to values for a minute, because I think. I went ahead and moved that on to the parking lot to make sure that we address it. And we'll go ahead and move over to, would you prefer to hop over to values or? We're hopping over to values. All right, let's go to values. Those, I think we can tackle easier, we've been at this all day, not this all day, but.
So may I take this card off with my mission and vision and goal?
Woody, do you have a list of, do you have your thesaurus up? Are you looking at some? You've got some good words over there?
We're moving to values.
You can, you can give them separately and we'll consider them next time. But my goal is to get out of here before we're fried.
We're, we're hitting the wall here.
Yeah, okay. What values, does anybody have any problem with any of those values that are already there? Any concerns about any of the values we currently have?
Or do you wanna add anything?
Well, let's start with, is there anything that, anybody feels strongly we should take off? Organize our thoughts. High performance. Or, and if you feel like we should reword, throw that out as well, transparently.
Something we need to change.
Customer service.
Another word. Or something.
Stewartship, any of those words trouble anybody in the room? Or values?
Please don't be afraid, you know, because I don't want anybody in here to be hurt. We have to own it. And I know.
Okay, so far I'm not hearing anybody, but, you know, between now and the next time we meet, if you revisit this and you say, you know what, that word just bothers me, I don't think it's the right word, or it should be up there. How about what's missing?
The word customer service, I think we have gone beyond that. We internally already use the word stellar service. And would you be at a higher value?
And that's both internal and external. Can you let Joe?
Right, and even when you look at rigor, what would be a word you would use for rigor? Right? I mean, what would be another word for rigor? I'm hearing.
Are we talking, though, about values as they apply to our students or?
Values for the organization. You are setting the vision, mission, value for the organization at the government.
Because rigor, does that apply to them?
Well, see, that was similar to exactly what Sam was talking about there. It was similar to, that was the word of the day then.
Right, it was.
So you gotta, I mean, you know, customer service sound like, you know, Walmart, you know? Rigor sounds like the old.
It's a challenge.
Yeah, you know, like, like, you know, fidelity, you know, we gotta grow our fidelity in rigor.
All right, you did a great job. So what she was doing is she's making note of the words that we have some questions about. The right word, they connotate the right thing. What's missing?
Grit. Grit, oh, babe, we can add that in there. Woody said that? You've been doing it.
You could do grit for rigor.
Woody, Woody.
You could do grit.
We are big on grit.
That's it.
We value grit.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, I love that.
Yeah, see, you got to get your new stuff in there.
It's about ability to buckle down and challenge yourself, and not...
Not killing.
That's about academic rigor. And that's right, then it's not just about academic.
Your goals.
How about fairness?
I like it.
I don't see fairness up there.
Right.
I would say...
Integrity.
We have integrity.
We had integrity and equity.
It's not the same as fairness.
Excellence, excellence in what?
Woody, I think equity is what we had.
And storage, that's a great book.
And we don't have it right now, and the only, the only reason I would disagree, I, equity may mean everybody gets the same thing, fairness means everybody has the same option.
No, they're the word, they, they, they can sit together, if he's right there, he'll look it up anyway.
Yeah.
That's because all of my hesitation.
To put, put up that...
Equity.
Equity is fairness.
Because you want equity, equity is for all. Equity is generally for all.
It's different than equality.
Yeah, equality, that's a good one.
So, I'm, I was going to pull up the word, word cloud again, because that'll help trigger some of those, but I don't necessarily want to have the whole conversation here, I, I mean, what I think the word indicating is, is there's a few words that we would want to change.
Yes.
And some words we might want to...
There it is. Equality being fair, and then pressure.
Exactly.
The value of a shared issue by a district school board.
I'll put it pretty clean.
Opportunity.
You, you really don't want to leave that out, because...
No, you don't, but it's not in there now.
Yeah, but if you don't push it, people will not be promoted, I'm telling you.
Right, but it's not one of our values.
Well, it's, I mean, kids will not be, I know.
But, so you're, I'm saying we should add it, you're saying...
Yeah, well, not, I don't say what word, but it needs to be...
Right, but we need to get that, that's an important value.
A word that we know will touch everybody.
Absolutely.
And I'm being...
You all are going to hear me.
We're saying equity or fairness, one of those.
Yes.
Equality, someone said quality.
Inclusiveness is a good word.
Inclusiveness.
Which is different than equality.
Well, there's one called justice.
I like inclusiveness.
Equitableness, equitableness, fair play, fair-mindedness.
But you can be inclusive and not be fair, so I don't think...
Right.
I think we do both. We all have too many values by the time we walk out of here, we'll have to figure out how to narrow them down.
Okay.
What else are we missing?
Right now.
Um, opportunity, is that, can that be a value?
That's the only thing you do.
I'll write it down.
What was the last one you said?
I just said, opportunity, can that be a value?
Is it?
I don't know, I asked a question. She, I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Jessica.
Jessica, dizzy, eyes rolling, head shaking, I'm not sure, we'll write it down.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was like, I, yeah, I'm doing, that's why I was asking, I don't know.
Somebody said take stewardship out.
Yeah, I don't think.
I don't know, it doesn't, I know what it meant.
Integrity, integrity kind of covers it.
Well, and stewardship, I thought meant taking care of our kids, but I think the word is just a little outdated.
Yeah.
That's why a couple of these words, rigor, stewardship, are a little outdated, so.
Yeah, the concept is...
Integrity kind of covers it.
Equity is not.
Equity is, is current.
Yeah.
Stewardship did not mean to me just our kids.
Stewardship is all responsibility.
Fiscal facility and stewardship of everything.
Relationships.
Partnerships.
Yes, got it.
So, that's care.
Integrity kind of covers it.
It does, integrity.
Covers some of it, it's got to be another word, stewardship is kind of dated.
So, it's just a dated word, but I now, that you say it, I remember, yes, that's how we looked at stewardship.
The bill is...
Responsible.
It sounds cold.
Were you going to say something?
Because it is about...
You got to jump in.
Relationships.
Johann, lots of Spanish words.
I'm, I'm thinking about having a millennial value, something that is more aligned to, to our global challenges, I don't know, because it's kind of repetitive, and maybe sometimes it's, I don't know, kind of, okay, yeah, it's just like the same thing, I don't know, I'm trying to think about, I'm thinking about my students when we have the meetings, or the campaign, or the mentality or something.
Millennial value.
Millennial, yes, vision, I don't know, because sometimes, I can see that because we are so in this traditional box, that we don't, we don't see that differentiated vision from our students sometimes.
Collaborative.
Innovation.
Differentiate values.
We appreciate innovation.
Innovation.
Yeah.
Collaboration.
Innovation.
That's a good one.
Innovation.
I said creativity.
Transformation.
I said innovation.
Well, this is that innovation.
Restructuring, rearranging.
Is innovation and differentiate, and differentiate the same thing?
No.
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 No, but, I don't know if you can call differentiation a value, I'm not sure, for what people understand it as a value. Innovation, I think, could be a value.
But millennials and younger want it to be for my interests, and even though there's a lot of general, but they want a pathway into their, so, do we hold that as a value? And how do we describe that?
I don't know.
Play enough with Johann was saying.
Okay, now we really hit the wall.
Yep.
So, this time, we really will...
We have enough to work with.
This time, we will have these two brainstorm charts go out to the group.
This is homework.
Keep, keep working on it.
Okay. Okay, so that's values, we talked about, and then, that leaves, as far as our drivers are concerned, our...
It becomes an exit door, they don't know what they're reading.
You know we're done, right?
We hit the wall.
Jessica.
Unless somebody, unless somebody got it, something, it just won't wait.
Well, let's, let's actually, okay, so mission, everybody take a look at that, but I think something that'll help a little bit, at least from a differentiator standpoint, zoom in here. So, and we'll talk about this more next time when we do, because we'll want to make sure that we do this, but our differentiators are largely driven off of our strengths. So, when you're thinking about things that you do really well, that make you unique and special, you know, we have things around here around state-of-the-art facilities and preparing students for a career and probably serving a diverse community, does it cover all of those strengths, right? So, something to think about the next time we meet.
Okay.